Do we have a chairman?
We do not have a chairman as of yet. I have not seen him.
But we do have a quorum, so technically we are able to start.
Alright.
Is that you guys, if you want to start now?
I will start.
Okay.
Everybody that's stood up.
Yeah, we'll start.
Rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who's you going to pray?
Go ahead.
Father God, we thank you for this night. We ask that you be with us and guide us in our decisions and in our discussions, and let it be respectful and kind to everybody involved. We ask that you look over us as this weather comes through our area and grant us mercies and graces. We ask this in Jesus' glory's name. Amen.
Amen.
Good evening.
Good evening. So... I don't have a copy of the new agenda, so...
Um, here, let me... Here you go.
Is there an email?
Yes.
I don't... I have whatever the email... I don't have any.
Yeah, this is it. I didn't see one in there. Okay. So... So we have... Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Uh, I make a motion. We, um...
So Susan had asked that added be... Eric be added and to add these special minutes from 5:22 as well to the agenda.
Okay. I move we add the minutes from 5:22 to the minutes to be approved.
The special minutes?
Special minutes. Add Eric to the agenda under... New business or old Eric?
Eric.
I don't know what's...
It would be under department.
I don't... It may be. I don't know. He may want something else.
It would be under department.
Is it an update? I don't know what it is.
Yeah.
Okay. We add Eric.
We'll just add him under department.
Okay.
Department update. There he is.
I also move we move the, uh... 8D and 8E to the top of the agenda, the two executive sessions.
Okay.
We can move them to...
Move them before old business?
Yep.
Okay, Chairman?
Yeah.
That's where we're at. We have made a motion to add special minutes... Special meetings minutes to 5:22 to the agenda for approval, and Eric Bailey to department updates after new business.
First on the new business? You're making first on new business?
Well, I was just going to make it after new business. Department updates.
Oh, right after new business?
New business, unless you want to do it sooner.
I don't even have an agenda, so I'm not going to say.
Yeah, neither.
Somebody forgot about me.
I brought my own.
Yeah. I didn't have one in my book either, so...
That's fine.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the agenda with the updates.
Did we second them, moving those things and...
Yeah, that's what I'm asking now.
Oh, okay.
Motioning for now. You want a second?
Second.
Okay.
Okay, Milburn?
Yes.
Waisenhut?
Uh, sure.
Bear Bauer?
Yes.
Did we move those things?
We have the special... And we need to get these up to here.
Okay, I'll trade.
Okay.
It's all wrote on here. Oh, let me make some notes.
And did we have this?
Eric under department after new business.
Okay.
Where are you guys putting Eric Bailey? Move.
Department updates, which is in... I guess that usually goes after new business, or is that part of new business?
It's usually part of new business.
Okay, so... Maybe we just add it in there somewhere?
You want him at the top of the new business?
Yeah. There we go.
Yes.
Tornado sirens.
So we have to... Take cover.
I guess if the sirens are going off... I have made a motion to pause meeting until the alarms go off. Maybe they will. We'll be taking everyone back to the back portion of the courthouse. If the storm gets too severe, we will be relocating back to the basement of the courthouse.
I move we pause the meeting and follow Jimmy's instructions. Follow him to safety until safety's cleared, and we can come back and... To meeting session.
Alright, all approved?
Yes.
If I was a homeowner, I'd sit on my porch and watch it.
You know what you call a bunch of Kansasans in the front yard with those lights?
How you doing?
Where's the tornado at?
I'm okay.
Can I pause that?
Okay. Alright, I'll call you back. I mean, or you call me if you need me.
Tornado.
Okay, gotcha. I love you. Okay. Bye. Yeah, I'm going to shut the door. That's the worst thing to do, shut the damn door.
Huh? Brandon, are you coming with me again? Oh, the sirens going out there too?
Oh, no.
They said it was south of town, so... One way or another. She was listening to Doug Hey.
Well, I don't know. I need...
I'm good, baby.
I need... I have teddy bear tomorrow, so... I didn't... I use cognitive thinking. But what? Alright. That's it, Omen. That says all, Omen.
I was born in tornado country.
We used to live there in town, and one night after midnight, your dad just flew dogs like you. I was like, "Wake up!" Everybody's in the hot pot, it's funny. Yeah.
They have to sound it. It's the National Weather Service.
They said they get two down. We're all going to go down.
Tell you when I was coming over here.
We had a...
Oh man, it was paling and raining. We got two and a half inches probably.
It's east of Fort Scott, they said.
Yeah.
Less than 45 minutes, maybe.
Did you hear me? They says east of Fort Scott, they were watching it.
Tornado there?
I guess that's what we're talking about.
Warning means...
Which is that way.
Everything could happen, but the watch means there's one on the ground, so...
Yeah. No, watch means they're... It's intimate. It could happen. Warning is it's on the ground, or radar indicated.
Okay.
My weather says tornado watch.
Yeah.
I don't even look at the weather.
I moved it to the left.
Get outside and be...
If we're like most people in Kansas, we'd all go outside and look around. Say, "Where's that?"
Pretty much.
I'm just glad my father's got like that one personality.
My daughter lives across the alley. She's got an old rock basement in her house.
Somebody just texted me saying...
Usually they go in and out. They go in and out. Me and my wife usually stay over at our place and watch it on TV, and then, you know... If that guy gets nervous, then you got to get nervous.
We need to go forward?
Well, I was going to say, I'm just going back here to make sure there's somebody else who didn't make it back there that needs to go back there, or wish to go back there. We also have other areas of which we can take commissioners to keep the mission separate if needed.
Do we hear anything else?
I don't need to be separated, but I'm just... I'm fine.
I'm good.
Okay.
We'll look. We'll keep an eye out. We'll let you know if it gets worse.
Well, I'm also going to make it so all doors are unlocked, so if something does happen, run to the back Brian's office.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dad, what if people out there passing the, uh... Or has... Could they come... Or they all become silent?
I guess they may get the building. We'll take them to the back.
That's why they're unlocked.
How many do I...
I think it's a hundred and fifty.
I see you got a bunch of stores all over here.
Why isn't it... Does one of that... Whose office is that now?
Look like his room bed.
Mike, Micah uses it when she comes out.
Susan's office. Susan's house.
I don't know what she's wearing.
It's Susan's.
You got a whole bunch on your belly and... Because I got to get some stuff to put for that.
She hooked to the wall. Is the magnet not working?
Because the surgeon wanted to cover it up as much as possible. Why? Because he don't want to get forty-ninety from you? Like he's doing your... How was your surgery, David?
Huh?
Did it recover pretty decent?
Yeah, so far.
I got going to neck tomorrow.
Yeah.
We got to go children's nurse tomorrow, so you call the radio station.
Yeah.
Yep.
I guess that what it means when the sirens go off is done?
When they shut them down, it's usually all clear.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't get silenced very much out there where we live, you can't hear all. I know. I didn't get a call. You told me to. Oh, she just stood on your bed.
She just stood on my bed.
I didn't get no call, I'm sorry.
It's probably just for the alarm.
I wasn't walking. I thought they were just going to do death flashlights. I'll call one twelve to get more...
Put this in my pocket.
They don't have much either, do they?
Hmm?
They don't have much either. They don't have much in rubber either.
She said they was one of the worst ones about turning stuff in.
Of course they were. Give it to me to... What do you do? This is so much...
I don't know, I got somebody screaming on TV.
It has expired. We're in the third command.
Is that mine?
I don't know. Actually, mine does. Oh, you mean the water one?
Yeah. You're not drinking until I talk to her. Might be hers.
I don't even have the address in front of me. I don't have the address of the road.
Yeah, here you go. I got it right here. Here you go.
For the alley between Lot 3 and Lot 4 is a sub lot of Block 8 in Hyattville, Kansas.
I have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Yeah.
Okay.
Weisenhut?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Beer Bauer?
Yes.
Okay. Now, any public comments for the special meeting of the vacation of the road? Anybody opposed or pro? Okay, no public comments. So, I will make a motion that we close the special meeting for the vacation of the roads.
I'll second.
Milburn?
Yes.
Weisenhut?
Yes.
Beer Bauer?
Yes.
Let me bring it back next time.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, approval of the resolution for vacation of the road in Hyattville. Do I have a motion or a second?
I move we approve the resolution for the vacation of the road in Hyattville.
I will second. Any discussion, David?
I have none.
Okay.
Beer Bauer?
Yes.
Weisenhut?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Okay. Consent agenda. Approval of the 51625 accounts payable totaling $271,208.57. Approval of 51625 payroll totaling $296,288.24. And the tax rule corrections.
I move that we approve the consent agendas, item A through C.
I will second it.
Weisenhut?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Beer Bauer?
Yes.
Hold business. Item A, policy and procedures.
Oh, we, we made a motion. Oh, go ahead, Jennifer.
No, you're okay. I was just gonna tell about the executive sessions.
Yeah, we moved the executive sessions to the top.
Okay. So, the first one is the KSA 754319B2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body of agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship for litigation with attending and with, who's all going? Bob? So counsel and the three commissioners?
Yes.
Counsel on the three commissioners. For how long do we need? 10 minutes?
Be fine. And then if we need to add anybody, and then we come back out if we need to add anybody.
We will be back in the, in this chamber at 6:03.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Beer Bauer?
Yes.
Weisenhut?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
It's even hotter in there than it is out here.
Make a motion to resume normal session.
Second. All right, Beer Bauer?
Yes.
Weisenhut?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
No action. Next. Okay, make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to KSA 54319B1 to discuss personnel matters of individuals, non-elected personnel to protect their privacy for job performance with, I'm assuming, the three commissioners?
Uh, can I have Bob?
Sure.
Okay.
And I guess the counsel?
Yeah.
For... How long do we need for?
We'll just do job performance.
For how long?
Oh, uh, sorry. Do 20 minutes?
20 minutes. We'll be back at 6:25.
I'll second.
In this room.
All right, Weisenhut?
Yes.
Milburn?
Uh, yes.
Beer Bauer?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to go out by Mark's.
Mom said she probably.
To his, oh, son for his great graduation tonight. He called me a check because he's writing. They got it. Last night.
And that was the third night. One because Alan.
She's up by Columbia.
I knew she was five ways.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm bringing out here.
It is a long way.
I have my little stopwatch here. Can I? I don't know if I can. I gave Jennifer a tag for you so you can come during public session. I gave Jennifer a card for you so you can come during public session. Is that okay?
Make a motion.
Oh, you don't need to? Oh, okay, okay.
Make a motion to resume normal session.
A second. Was there action?
No action.
Milburn?
Yes.
Bill Bauer?
Yes.
Weiss-Hunt?
Yes.
So now we're ready for old business, correct?
Yes.
Policy and procedures.
Strike, scratch it out. I don't have anything unless somebody else does.
I have nothing this week.
Budget reminder?
I'll do that. So I want to address the elected officials and department heads, reminding them to get those very detailed budget docs to the clerk's office by June 1st. And be ready to defend your budget down to the dollar.
Work sessions reminder.
Okay, so I think on the agenda here, we did a camera work session. For June 23rd, I think that we, I'm not sure if we determined we were going to just start that work session immediately after the meeting because that's a meeting date. Is that what we were doing?
For today? No.
Well, no, for June 23rd, that camera work session where we were talking about the cameras.
Right.
So are we going to do that after the meeting, immediately following or right before? What, what did you want to do? I don't think it was.
I think maybe now we set it aside even longer until we figure out where we're going.
June 23rd is kind of a long ways out, so. So we can leave the work session on there, but do we want to do it before or after the meeting? Because that's a meeting day.
Yeah, I'd say after the meeting.
After the meeting, directly after meeting?
Directly after the meeting. That would be mine.
And then also the work session that you set for the, let's see, separation of public works and landfill.
I moved that up to tonight. I mean, I moved up, wait till after tonight, I guess.
Wait, okay, so, so for the separation discussion for the landfill and public works, that work session we're setting for June 16th, you set it for June 16th last time we were at the table. So are we doing it before the meeting or after the meeting?
We'll do it before or after.
After the meeting.
All of them after on my.
Directly after. Same with you, Brandon?
Yep, that's finally.
Okay. All right, so that was that. From me.
Anything else on work session?
No.
Okay. And here we go, landfill separation, Mr. Bearbauer.
I got a statement here to make first. First, I'd like to apologize to the chairman. I'm sorry. And other members of the board, Commissioner Milburn, I apologize. And all the citizens that were in attendance last week and those that were watching, I apologize. I apologize for my failure to follow the Roberts rules of order. And the disrespect I presented towards the chairman in, in bringing this motion forward. There was a heated discussion that went on between myself and three citizens and we did not follow the rules. Nor did we allow the chairman to have control of the meeting. With that said, my reasons for bringing this issue back tonight is that since then I have, I have thought about it. And the purpose that, that was given to me last week on, on why I asked for it to be tabled and discussed later. I have since learned that was based off of, for lack of a better word, fraudulent information regarding an email on rates. And I'm, that's not why I, you know, was recommending this motion or, or that. When it comes to cost analysis on this, you know, the budget is a big, is a big issue for us, especially since we're going into our first one. But service as well is also a big issue. And the, the long range forecast regarding the cost or inflation and government regulations and environmental safety. We don't know what that's going to bring and it could bring a higher cost. We're going to be looking at payroll over our next budget. That could bring higher costs. It's always going to affect something on this. The reason why that I look at this being a separated deal, some of it I can't discuss because it involves not elected personnel. But I believe that, that some of the factors in the decision regarding the landfill is that it. Right now it's a part of a bigger operation on its own. It would be its own, its own priority. It would get a lot more attention than it gets now. And we just had, you know, that's, that's the way I look at it as far as, as operational control over that. It isn't about punishing anybody. It isn't about trying to, you know, whether or not we save money or we don't save money. We're going to save money because we're not increasing the budget now. It's under the 2025 budget, just like it, like it is. There's no change in it. And when you, when you lessen once, one department. You know, logically you say, okay, if I'm paying X number of dollars and I take part of that out of there, wouldn't you think that X number of dollars comes out of that as well? So what you're paying somebody to do as a supervisor, if he's not doing it anymore, you don't continue paying that person that money. So in the end, it all still balances out.
So you're going to lower somebody's money that they're making right now to.
Not right now, but 2026 budget, who knows?
So you're going to lower that dollar that you're paying somebody that's doing a great big job.
Because they're not doing that job.
Says who?
Well, if, if we separate.
Says who? There's a HR investigation going on right now. Nobody knows that.
Mr. Bearbauer has the floor. When he's done, you can rebuttal.
If you're not doing the same work, you're not, you shouldn't be paid the same amount of money for that work. If you're being paid money to run the landfill and you're no longer running the landfill, then you shouldn't be paid to run the landfill. That, that, that to me is simple math. Anyway, I felt that last week there was, the reasons that were being thrown at me. Did not, did not come from value sources. And so that's why I brought it back up again. And so I'll finish this here and then we can have further discussion. I move that the landfill department be separated from public works, that the landfill be increased by one employee from the current public works roster. That all equipment currently used at the landfill, in addition to the dozer currently used elsewhere, be placed under the control of the landfill supervisor. That the landfill will be, will operate under the approved 2025 budget and that public works will operate under the remaining approved budget. And any revenue generated by the landfill must be presented to the commission before being used.
Rebuttal? Do I have a discussion?
The discussion has to come after the second, and I'm not going to do that.
Well.
There is a work session that you've told all these people is going to happen, and now you're trying it again.
I've had this discussion for a long time.
You're having to, you have to second it. If you want to have a discussion, then we can have a discussion.
Then I second it.
Okay, now we can have a discussion. All right. Last week's meeting, 5:12, 25, there was a very large discussion on separation of landfill from public works. I questioned this because I wanted a cost analysis and I discussed the separation requiring pay raises for whoever would gain responsibilities of the landfill. It was then told to me by the other commission that the employees said they don't want raises until they could prove they make this landfill make money. Now I'd like to break this down a little. Please let me know where I go off track, okay? So when you get the landfill note paid off, which should be soon, instead of lowering the budget, you know, the budget amount they're going to get. The tax base, lowering the dump fees to the, to the taxpayers. Are you planning to give raises and buy new equipment that otherwise would have been, you know. Not if, if we were to just leave this alone. If the motivation, the motivator is actually as it was stated last week. That to me means we as a commission have taken a small problem rather than navigating it correctly through the proper channels, choose to cost the taxpayers more money for our poor response to an otherwise manageable situation. Now, you want to go over the numbers? It will cost money. Because even though you don't have to raise the budget, you could otherwise lower the budget. If you didn't do all these things. So regardless of what you're saying, it will cost money. And you're going to have to make that decision.
How much money?
How much money? Well, it's going to cost a fourth person when they're making do right now. That's for sure. It's going to cost the mechanics to go over there and fix things, which they do right now. It's going to cost a secretary, which is shared right now. But right now, under one director, they can make priority over whether this or that is where the money goes. There's not a lot of money to go around. So we want to spoil this department and make sure they take all this money because it can generate revenue? When really, we don't have to do that. We could lower the budget that goes to them. That is all. There are some people that signed up for comments as well before you make your decisions. Well, there are comments, public comments for things that are on the meeting. It's in the resolution. They can do that.
Chairman, do you want to hold that? They moved and seconded.
I speak?
Yep.
Yeah, and I just wrote down some things here. We kind of went over a bunch of it last time. My name's Skidj, Kevin Allen. Bossing me around?
No, I said you might, you might want to come up here. That's all I said.
County employees tell me what to do tonight. Anyway, so here's the deal. Am I supposed to sit down too? You want me to sit down?
You don't have to.
I just thought maybe you'd like to come.
We do, we do a lot of, we do a lot of hauling out there to the landfill, as you guys know. You know, we're a pretty big account, not as big as what you said. You work for the largest trash company in the world, right? We are very small trash company compared to any of you guys. It's not yours, it's ours. We worked really hard to get where we're at, as well as Clayton Miller back here. Their family's dealt in trash for, what, Clayton probably last 50 years? Yes, since 87. They're really a prideful local company as well. You know, I've spoke to four states, I'll just throw that out there too. There's several of us that are really nervous as to where this would head. You know, it starts out simple and then it gets bigger. And, and I think one of the things that we're concerned with is that we're going to look at the dump as a cash cow, the transfer station as a cash cow to where the more money it can generate, the better equipment we can buy and things like that. Would that be a fair statement to say? If we can get it to generating some good money, then we can get some better equipment and so on.
I think first and foremost, when it comes to equipment, when you have a equipment management fund and you have equipment management practices, then it doesn't matter whether you need to generate more money or not. You can do it with the money that you got. Right now, when it comes to rates, the way.
Right now, when it comes to rates, the way the rates would be raised is if the rates are raised where we take it so that we can offset the cost. Well, not because I think right now, don't we, we kind of rate, pretty much, we pay no more or no less than what, than what, you guys don't get, you don't get carried over unless they raise their rates.
Here's what I know, and this is why I mentioned it at the last meeting. If you remember, I mentioned P&Ls because I wanted to see the last three years of P&Ls on the transfer station because that would let us know exactly where we're at on this. I don't know as you guys, and I don't know, is somebody here?
There's a guy waiting in the wings, but I don't know why he's in there.
Well, anyhow, so if we did a cost analysis, like we were excited thinking you guys were going to have the work session, you're going to look at numbers and see what we could do. Because if you did that P&L and you did a cost analysis, then it would tell you exactly where you're at. And maybe, even maybe, pie in the sky, make the dump fees cheaper than what they are right now because you're charging 35 for CND and 40 for the in-house for the transfer material. And if we go out and we say, hey, look, we made, you know, half a million dollars last year, we could afford to lower the dump fees for the citizens of the county. I mean, a lot of towns do that. You know, Lynn County, Iowa, Allen County, all kinds of places make it cheaper for their local residents rather than to continue to raise it up and up and up. So I don't want to look at this as now, and hey, listen, I'm friends with all the guys out at the landfill. We all are. And it's the hardest thing we've had to do is to sit here and have discussions in open public and then go out there tomorrow to dump trash and be like, oh crap, are they mad at us, are they not mad at us? So we don't want to look at this as a big hostile environment either. And we're not going to be treated any different than what we ever have been. I'm not going to allow that either. But what I'm saying is, we are watching. We are going to be watching 24/7. And it disheartens me, Dave, and I'm talking to Dave right now because I tried to call you and then I was told you had a surgery. So I was like, oh, I'm backing off because if he's having surgery, I don't, the last thing I want to do is bother you. But I left you a message. I called you.
I didn't hear, get a message. I saw that you called.
Well, you didn't return my call.
Well, because I was in recovery.
Well, you're not in recovery now and you've, have you been in recovery today?
No.
Still not too late to give OKB a call. Me and you have been tight since we were young, since you arrested Mayor Hat, Washmiller as I was arrested and here in the jail. Call me back because I'd like to have these type of discussions. As an elected official, I, and I hate when somebody says, well, back when I was on one. But I used to get a lot of phone calls as well and I talk to my people because they're the ones that trusted in me and put me up there. We want to make sure that this is being done the right way. One of the things I had on here, I got some notes, and I talked about the P&L if we do that and find out, and I'd still like you guys to do that. Will you be willing to do a P&L for me for the last three years and see what that land transfer station has generated to where we can take that as numbers and say, okay, now that we know that it's made a half a million dollars a year, we can lower these fees rather than raise the fees? Would you be willing to do that if you found out that the landfill was making...
Or lower the budget allotment?
Yeah.
Yeah. Either of those things.
Well, I don't have a problem doing the cost analysis. Should have been being done all along anyway.
Sure.
Because it generates money every year and it generates cost every year. But we, you know, do we get an accurate cost when money is being pulled from one budget to the other? I mean, we do, we do a transfer of funds like, you know, Three Card Monte.
Well, here's my thing. It should be fairly simple with the push of a button because you're going to have my records in there from every dollar I've ever gave you, Clayton's records as well as everybody else. And I know that's not completely profit because you're going to have to take equipment costs in there and things like that. So I would like for you to be able to try to at least come close on your equipment cost, your employee cost, your overhead, whether it be electric bill, water bill, I don't care. Get close and tell me whether that dump's making money because I guarantee you, the transfer station, it'd be tough. I mean, they're not going to make a whole lot of money in the transfer because that stuff's got to be reloaded, taken over to Allen County, so on and so forth. That CND, boy, there's money to be made in that because you're dumping stuff and running over it every once in a while. So if you could, you know, do me the solid of doing that would be great. I'd still love for you to have the work session over it before you make any decisions. I mean, that's the thing, item number three here, I said, why would you even tell us you're going to have a work session and crawfish on us because of this fancy Roberts Rules of Orders and all this stuff? I know it got a little heated last time and I know that Brandon was a little bit let down whenever you made the motion you did.
Well, that doesn't do with that. I mean, it does have to do with respect and respect of his position. But the information that I got on, you know, and then to say that blindsided is a word that gets used, you know, that's been used a couple of times a day in how that happened last week, you know, I don't appreciate, and it's not you, it's not the other two gentlemen that was here, but it seems like there's some behind-the-scenes stuff that was going on and I did not know anything about an email that was going around about rates and increases of rates and my name gets put on it? That don't set well with me. And it's the second time since I've been in office that somebody has taken information that they shouldn't have been able to manipulate and manipulate information against me.
Right.
So I, you know...
Well, that has nothing to do with me.
Well, no, and it don't. But it does have to do with this situation. And I feel that by moving the situation to the current position that I want to move it to is going to better, be better served for the people that go out there and haul out there and go out there, the people that have to work out there every day around and the equipment that they have to work with because it becomes a priority when it comes to safety and other issues that haven't been a priority out there.
We can argue safety in that till the cows come home, but what I'm telling you is right now you have a pretty luxurious way to run it because if, at any given moment, if they need extra help, it's a phone call away and they're there. Prime example was today. We had extra people there today, running hoes, doing all kinds of stuff. And that's the luxury you have right now. It's calling over and saying, hey, send a guy over to drive the truck, send, you know, whoever to do this, send whoever to do that. And if you just gather a full-time fourth person, my only fear is that's more money out of the, you know, what are you talking? How much is that going to cost you?
Nothing.
Nothing for a fourth person? You got somebody to volunteer for a fourth person?
I got 44 people that work for Public Works, so I can put them where I want to put them.
I'll be darned. You can do that personally. You can put people where you want to put them.
Well, I mean, I can't, but this collective body can, you know, but when I said...
So you're saying you're going to take a current employee?
When I read the motion, I said, off the current Public Works roster.
Okay. I missed that part.
Yeah.
So you're not hiring an additional, you're taking away from something. Well, it's a mystery to the public then where we're stealing them from. We might not have stop signs around the county. I have no idea. But you guys, that's why you're elected, that's why you can do your thing. Go ahead, Brandon.
So what's it, what do we charge you right now to haul in MSW trash?
I don't know. I'd have to look at my, what's MSW?
That's the regular...
Trash or CND?
It's the regular household trash.
Forty a ton.
Forty a ton?
Yeah. That's in-county.
It's in-county. We run in-county business. It costs the county $33.70 a ton to haul it off. So we're making what, $6.30 a ton?
Not much at all.
How many tons do you get on a load?
Twenty-two tons.
That's average.
That's what I just mentioned earlier, that you're not making a lot on the transfer part. Can you tell me the numbers on the CND?
I don't have those numbers right in front of me.
I have them.
What do we charge for the CND?
It's 35.
In-county.
In-county's 35. Forty. CND out-of-county is...
There you go.
So it's 35 and 40. And you figure we pay a guy $17 an hour to run the crusher, to run the machine, to work everything down.
I'm getting rock cream in my head.
Yeah, the compactor, the sheep's foot.
Yeah, and you're, so, okay, if you want to have that argument, how many hours a day are they running the compactor?
Probably two or three.
Maybe, on a good day.
I know, I know.
Right, maybe two.
But we're still paying them for eight hours. They're there for eight hours.
Well, yeah, but they're not running, they're not sitting on the machine, having a smoke, waiting on somebody to bring trash in. There should be stirring the beans, down at the hut helping out, getting the truck ready. There's always something there to do.
Keeping stuff up today.
Right.
Keeping stuff up and going.
Yeah. I'm just saying, there's going to be slow times.
Oh, yeah.
And they're going to be caught up and saying, what are we going to do now? We're going to hang out for a little bit, whatever. But there's going to be times when they're saying, shit's out of control. This ain't good. We need help. And you get guys over there 100 mile an hour because it may have been a Saturday that was out of control and the hut's full and when I come in Monday, I ain't got nowhere to dump. So, I mean, there's different situations where they're going to have to call and get extra help all the time. That is the only operation that you guys have. It doesn't pay to do gravel roads, it doesn't pay to do anything else. This is the only opportunity we have to get an extra cash grab and at least keep it afloat. We just don't want to make it a huge profit center. This isn't a GFL, this isn't a WCA.
My, if you want to know my future plans, what can I have planned, is to eventually expand out and actually get a landfill so we don't have to haul it off. Now we can charge you guys 22 or 23 dollars a ton and you just bring it here and we pack it down and we cover it up and then we start collecting the methane gas from it and we start branching into other things, you know, but we've got to start somewhere with that plan.
Right, a liner pit, yeah.
Now, I would have liked to have waited till, what was it? June...
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
Right.
Because, again, that's why I didn't have all my stuff with me because, so, but...
Well, it's not too late to wait till June 16th. You've got all the time in the world, that's what I'm saying, that's why I'm here. We, hey, listen, not only am I a big customer at the landfill, I'm a big customer of the county. I write that check every year, just like all of us do.
Right.
And it's a big one. I just want to be heard, I want to be respected, just like these guys. I don't want to make hasty decisions and go back and say, mm, we didn't think about that. I mean, what, possibly could have talked about that in the work session, you know? So that's why I'm here. You know, and the only thing I'll say, Dave, and it's not a cut on you, but it's a cut on you, one thing that, when we was talking about change, when you ran on change, and when I left, I thought, gosh darn it, that would have been a good line to use. Because the one thing we talked about was county perks with the free landfill because it does get abused sometimes, right? Not everybody's going to do the right thing. Sometimes maybe the whole block's bringing their trash down to the back of the pickup, whatever, who knows? But when you say you ran on change, but yet on that particular item, you like tradition. So just think about that kind of stuff because not everything's changed. You want to keep that tradition where there's free stuff being handed out.
But if that would have been up tonight, you would have seen that my vote changed on that because of all the pushback on just that one little item.
Right. Well, it's not a little item when you've got 100 people dumping for free. So, I mean, it's just something to consider.
Been doing that for 30 years, 40 years.
Absolutely, but you ran on change.
Yep, you're absolutely right.
So just consider, it may be something that we still continue to let them have free landfill. I don't want to, you know, cut my own, however you say, I don't want to cut my own throat by saying I want to take something away from county employees. But I also don't want to say that they're on poverty level and I also don't want to say that it's a family, a tradition that we're going to carry on if we run on change. So I do appreciate you guys listening to me, though. I really do. That means a lot for you inviting me to table, especially this guy, gave me a seat.
What's your name?
Skidj.
Skidj?
Kind of a big deal around here.
Oh, my God.
You know the name, man.
Is that your first name or last name?
You meet a one-legged skidj, you'll know.
You'll need to know that name.
Just say Skidj.
Kevin now.
Would that give me a free burger or something?
No, I'd like some ice cream.
Oh, good.
So, so more on discussion. Susan pulled some numbers and spoke in a financial advisor capacity on this and I don't want to have to read her email point for point. So speaking in a financial advisor capacity, here's the most recent numbers to landfill. Want to point out, there's another fund that has to cover taxes and benefits for the employee for landfill. So you add an employee, you add more benefits. We're required by law to have the 250,000 in the landfill fund, that's not there yet. So, so really, you are spending more money, whether you think you're not spending more money or not, you're spending more money. And just because we're allocating 800,000 to it this year, if you were to not spend more money on equipment, people, this, that, or the other, you could lower that to the taxpayers. You don't have to allocate that much money to that if it starts doing better, if you don't have to make that payment anymore. You don't have to keep giving that money. So it costs, it really does cost money. We're here to be good stewards of everybody's money and this is just not responsible, David. I really don't think it is.
I disagree.
Just because they're squabbling.
I disagree.
This is not responsible.
I disagree.
That was what was stated in the last meeting.
You're right. That is not why ever.
Okay, I mean, that is maybe not for you, but...
And...
And if you want to grow the landfill, fine, but wait till you grow it.
I have a meeting every Monday with our county boss, every Monday, sit down with him and have a conversation. I talked to him about it today. His words were, it's probably not ready yet, you know, because we have an open dialogue in the meetings. I feel like we've kind of worked past some of our past issues and we have a good meeting every Monday. And I told him my concerns about it. So as bad as I want to separate it, and I do, I want to take it away, and not because it's, not because of Eric, not because of anything else, because I see it as an opportunity for it to make money. So...
So I guess are we still open to discussion?
What was, what is your reasoning? Tell me your reasoning. I got, I got information to give you.
If you've been in executive session, you know my reason.
Okay. Then I need, I think you need to go into another executive session right quick because I have additional information that I just got.
Hmm, okay. Okay. Let's go into executive session.
Okay, we have to vote on your motion that's on the floor. Vote and I'll give you the additional information and then you can put your motion back on the floor after we come back out if you still so choose. Okay, so no. And I'll make a motion to go into the executive session.
So are we voting on this issue now?
We have to.
Okay, so you'd have to take it off the floor.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
You could, you could table the motion to the second pending further discussion in executive session, but we have to have a reason for the executive session, which would be, you guys have been along with us, so it has to be not elected personnel, term client...
It's not elected personnel.
Not elected personnel?
Yep.
I think, I think you can, somebody can make a motion, table the motion second pending further discussion based on not elected personnel, then when you return from executive session, then you'd have to make the motion to remove the motion tabling and take it up. You can't just leave it hanging.
Right, yes.
It has to be either withdrawn...
Okay.
Approved or disapproved. There might, I might be a little off on some of that, but I think that's generally what you have to do.
Which way do you want to do that, David?
We can table it pending the executive session like he just said.
Okay.
And come back out and decide.
Okay.
Pardon me, the motion to table...
So I'll make a motion and we table the first and the second, the motion and the second pending further discussion in the executive session pursuant to KSA 754319B1 to discuss personal matters of individuals, non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. How much time do you need, Mike?
Give me 10 minutes.
We'll be back at 7:08 in this room.
Who's going to be, okay, who's going to be in it?
The three commissioners and the councilor.
Okay.
Did we vote?
All right. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, Beer Bauer?
Yes.
Weizenhund?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion to resume regular session?
Second.
You probably have to either make a motion to take the motion off the table, withdraw it, whatever you're going to do. I think you have to take it off the table under the rules of procedure.
I have to?
Some of it.
I'm one that keeps on the table, is vote.
Well, you just have, we tabled it so you can discuss, so just ask the chairman to move it from the table.
Okay.
It's been a loss since I was in my 40s.
Yeah. So I move that we remove it off the table? Off of being tabled, so my, my, my motion stands, second.
We have a vote to resume regular session?
So Mike is seconded to that? Um, do all approve?
Yes.
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 So, been motioned and seconded to separate Public Works from the landfill.
I need a second on David's motion to remove it from.
Being tabled.
Being tabled.
Hold on, I'll second it.
All right, Milburn?
Yes.
Beer Bauer?
Yes.
Weizenhund?
Yes.
Could I ask some questions?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so if we don't have enough funds in the landfill to cover the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we have to have per KDHE, and when I was in Public Works, um, the cost closure, it went up about three percent in inflation every year. So this is something to keep in mind. So if we don't have enough funds in there now, last I looked, it was around a hundred and twenty-eight thousand in landfill. I mean, is Public Works going to continue to cover that amount even if you're pulling it from Public Works?
No, I mean, it's already a tone.
You're saying that in the past, that three percent inflation was paid out of, out of Public Works budget, or did it come out of landfill revenue?
The two hundred and fifty thousand that we need to have for KDHE, so if for any reason they say, okay, they come in tomorrow and they close our, our transfer station in landfill, we have to have that for cost closure to cover everything, so, to cover all of the hallway, to cover the cleaning, to cover the C and D, um, actually cover it per their standards, um, they estimate that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have to have that in our fund to cover that. We currently do not have that in our fund, um, Public Works has been covering that. Um, are they going to continue to cover that if you're pulling landfill away from them?
So they're covering it from the budget?
They're covering it from their budget, because landfill's budget does not have the appropriate funds in it.
They set the money aside because something happens.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's a significant chunk of Public Works' budget that's kind of just in limbo that they can't use to buy equipment or do any repairs, upgrades, anything like that, so I'm just curious on that one.
I will just make a quick statement, all things, again, that could be worked over over a work session. A great, a great, I'm glad you brought it up, I just say that that would be a great item for a work session. That's it.
Not trying to beat a dead horse, I mean, that's not just a talk, but like, that's what was my understanding of the meeting last week, you know, we had some time to, you know, figure some things out. I don't understand, is there a, is there a big rush? Am I missing something with the, what we're rushing for?
I'm just bringing up what I got, what I brought up last week.
Okay, I'm just saying, like, us as the citizens, you know, you give us your word, you know, we, the citizens elected you officials here. You know, you give us a word, hey, we're going to go out five weeks. So, and then today I see, hey, it's on the board, it's on the meeting again. I mean, I guess we're done meeting then?
Well, that's kind of the way I look at it from last week, when I found out that the information that got sent out was a bunch of, you know, pardon my French bullshit.
What was the information that got sent out?
About me having a, uh, email conversation with an employee over rates that I didn't have.
I don't think anybody said that, I don't think that was said.
I don't know where that came from, but have you had any, since you bring that up, have you had any conversations with employees at the landfill slash transfer station? Have you visited there?
I've been there quite a fa, quite a few times.
Have you, Mr. Weizenhund? Have you, Micah?
Uh, no, because I would only talk to, um, that's not procedure to, to do that.
My question is, since you.
Well, I'm going to interject, and you guys can do what you want, this is an open meeting, not an open forum. So, you guys can engage this, I'm not trying to be rude.
You, you signed up, can you come to the table?
But that doesn't mean you get asked. Hold on, paying you for a reason.
Okay.
An open meeting means an open meeting. He can certainly ask questions if you allow it, but this isn't an, an open forum. I'm just trying to keep it to the forum under the open meeting rules. You guys can engage this, or.
Okay, I'll just ask one question, that's it.
Well, if you have public comments, you should probably come up here.
But is it time for public comment?
Well, public comments are only for things not on the agenda.
Well, actually, actually, in the, the resolution, there are public comments for things on the agenda that all of you signed but me. So, it is on there. And I can give it to you if you want it.
I'll make a motion that we just withdraw my motion to, um, vote on it.
I think, I second that.
Okay, I'm moving second to the.
All right, Beer Bauer?
Yes.
Weizenhund?
Yeah.
Milburn?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Bailey?
Got to be removed from tonight, you've got several roads that have washed out, cold looks that have washed out.
Absolutely, go do what you got to do. Yep, thank you, sir. Okay. May twenty-sixth meeting.
I'll do that. Memorial Day is on May twenty-sixth. I would, uh, suggest we move that meeting so that people that are out of town can attend, um, or doing things for Memorial Day. So, if all of you guys are good with the May twenty-seventh, um, just the following day, some more people can attend, I would, I'd be fine with that day. And if you guys are, I'll make a motion to do so.
I'm playing. Uh, you can have your meeting, but I won't be here.
Would you prefer us to another day?
I'm going to take the week off.
Oh, you just don't want to come at all?
Yeah, I'm not going to come at all. So you guys can.
Okay, I mean, we're going to take Memorial Day off.
You don't want to have a meeting at all? I mean, I'm good to go on, I can make a, I can keep pushing through.
Sometimes commissions, if that's the case, we'll just skip that week's meeting and go to the next week. It might make it a little long, but that's not unheard of, it's up to you all.
Well, I can't have a meeting by myself, but I'll, I'll, I, I will, um, I'm good to have a meeting if somebody wants to.
I've got too much going on on Memorial Day, so.
So you guys want to cancel that meeting, that week altogether?
Yeah, we don't normally have a meeting.
A meeting on holiday weeks.
I'm not normal.
Yeah, I know.
So.
All right. Public comments for items not on the agenda?
The college, I don't think they came.
Nick Graham?
How are you this evening, sir?
I'm okay. The last time I sat at this table was the first meeting of the new commission back in January. And that night, I felt something I had not felt in a long time, hope. Hope that the toxicity that has plagued this county for years was over. Hope that, to be blunt, the dumpster fire our county had become was finally extinguished. I come before you tonight with a heavy heart, as it has become increasingly clear to me that that fire rages on, and that without intervention, the sickness that fuels that fire is going to turn this county into a place no one with any sense will want to serve, work for, or live in. That sickness has a name, and that name is grievance mentality. Google defines grievance mentality as a pattern of behavior where individuals persistently perceive themselves as unfairly treated, unjustly wronged, or as victims of external forces. In my experience, it also breeds paranoia, an inflated sense of entitlement, and a need to control everything. I truly believe that almost every controversy that has popped up in this building since January, from shock resignations to legal controversies to fights over control of the landfill, can be traced back to grievance mentality. A lot of people have questioned why Commissioner Kruger resigned so quickly. I don't want to speak for him, but I will say this. I believe Leroy felt caught in the crossfire of the endless civil wars within this county. Wars, and I, I'm not trying to, I consider all these people friends, and I don't even like speaking about this, but there's wars between the clerk and IT offices and the sheriff's department, wars between various factions of Public Works. I believe Leroy felt like an island unto himself on this commi- I believe Leroy felt like an island unto himself on this commission, like he was the only one here who wasn't trying to serve one side or another of these various wars. I'd also like to note that I don't operate on hearsay, as a courtesy, I sent Leroy this portion of my comments this past weekend, and he had no issue with me making them. Prior to the special convention to replace Commissioner Kruger, I met with both Dylan Duffy and now Commissioner Milburn, to encourage them, but also to warn them about the giant toxic mess they were walking into. I told them about the internal wars being waged, and that if they were chosen, they would likely end up feeling just like Leroy did, but that I believed help would arrive this coming January. To their credit, this didn't deter either of them. Flash forward to this past Friday morning, when I received a very unexpected phone call from an audibly frustrated Commissioner Milburn, her message was shortened to the point, Nick, you were right. That phone call ate at me all day, as it had the same tone and tenor as phone calls I used to receive from Commissioner Kruger. Guys, I hate doing this, I hate speaking in public, period, and I hate making potentially people I consider friends and respect on all sides of these wars mad at me, but what I hate even more is that every time I encourage good people like Leroy and Dylan and Micah to serve this county, it turns out that what I'm really asking them to do is jump head first into a spirit-crushing toxic meat grinder, that has to stop, and now. Now, I don't want to discuss, or I don't want to discount the fact that there were many very legitimate grievances made against all of these warrant departments by previous occupants of this table, but those occupants are gone now, and just because a grievance is legitimate, that doesn't mean it's healthy to hold on to. It's past time for everyone in this county to put in the past in the past, put down their swords, put down their sense of entitlement, put down their need to control, and bury the hatchet. If they don't, grievance mentality will eat both them and this county alive from the inside out like a cancer.
Thank you. College? I can't read the writing.
I don't think they came.
They're asking for rock, I got an email date.
Yeah, so, okay, so, we'll bring that up, actually, a lady called me that's on the board, and I guess regional softball is gonna be played at the shared field for the college, um, and she asked if the county could deliver some rock for them and clean up their driveway. I talked to Eric about it, he was gonna bring it up at the meeting, but because we have some floods, he's busy doing his job, so.
And I called and asked what it would cost, as I do for everything, um, and it looks like it'll cost, um, uh, 1450 a ton, because it's $4 a ton to crush, and then you got the mileage and, and what it costs to get to where it's going, um, you put 18 ton in a truck, it's $261 a load, they're thinking five loads, it's about $1,305 to give the college, um, so there's your numbers, um. I don't know who's supposed to spread it, but I also do know, I asked him if he even had the time to do it, um, and he said, only if these storms don't wreak havoc, and it looks like they have, so, um. It would be to his discretion, I'm not gonna tell him, neglect the county roads and go put gravel on the college, college, uh, thing, and, and I don't even know if I want to allocate $1,305 to do so, so.
I think if he can do it, he can do it, he should do it, I mean, it's, but if he can't because of the roads, then he can't do it.
Okay. Dale Griffin?
Are you giving him an answer?
Huh?
Are you giving him an answer of what, whether they want to do that?
I already had a conversation with Eric and said, you know, I mean, if it's in your budget, and you got time, then you can do it, I don't have a problem with this, but. But he taught me the same, he taught me the same thing, if, uh.
If you, if you want to support this idea, I think that you need to make a motion to, uh, to allow him to do it at his discretion, um.
Thank you guys for your time.
Yep.
Also taking consideration, there's local people that have gravel all the companies too. Taxpayers.
Yep.
See you guys.
I don't care, I mean, I guess I'll make a motion that we let Eric haul gravel at his discretion, if he can get it hauled for him.
I'll second.
All right, Beer Bauer?
Yes.
Waisenhan?
Yes.
Milburn?
No.
Dale Griffin? Griffiths. Sorry, I can't read.
That's okay. I didn't even know if I wanted to do it or not.
In fact, I don't even know if, um, it's something that can be talked about, but, um, there's a lot of talk, um, that I see of, that we've paid a large amount due to no, non-representation of board being in litigation, and as a taxpayer, I'm curious as why we had no representation for this.
We're not gonna make any comment on any pending litigation that's against generally anybody's idea, I understand what you're saying, but, um, there's, there's issues pending, and they'll be resolved maybe another time will be a better.
Okay.
I mean, I can't speak for them, but that's my legal advice, but there's no comment on it.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sparky?
I think he wanted to talk about the election, but they posted something out there on the wall, and I think he was, that was sufficient for him, and so.
Okay.
So, he went on, I, that's what he was hollering about.
Okay, and if anybody wants copies, we do have copies of what they posted out there to take.
Okay.
Did you show up to get on the, the meeting there?
Yep, Mr. George.
We, we dropped one and kind of asked people to do cards this time, but, um, I'm fine if he wants to speak.
And I wasn't sure if I was on the new business or old business.
Well, I don't think you got put on any business, but you would, you would, this is public comment, so.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for, uh, giving me a few minutes here, last time I was at the commission meeting, it was two weeks ago, we talked about Elm Creek Lake Dam repair, and we talked about trying to secure some funds to match with grants from Wildlife and Parks. We also talked about trying to get some estimates of the dam repaired to apply for another grant, and I told everyone then that we were really short time, it's been two weeks, I'm here for a progress report.
I believe when, uh, when we approved that $3,000 for the study for the dam, and it was sent to, uh, whomever was doing that.
Probably ag engineering.
Yes, yes.
They said it was gonna be about 60 days before they could get, could get that inspection done, so that is a, that is a deal, and I don't know that anybody here is gonna move forward until that inspection's done, just, just to be.
So, we're not going to apply for a grant now?
I thought we were doing it in conjunction with each one.
My grant window is now.
That's what I mean, I thought you were going, you were moving forward as well as we were moving forward with that inspection.
We approved an extension of the current grant.
Yes.
And we were looking at applying for another grant.
Another one, and Mr. Bailey was gonna run the numbers, I think.
Yes, sir.
So, I will call him tomorrow and see where he's at and try to give you a call.
I am, I'm holding the door open with the grant statewide coordinator to accept our application, so we really need to move on this.
I will, I will make a couple of phone calls tomorrow and see where we're at on getting our numbers together.
Great, I'm assuming after all this rain, the lake's probably full.
Probably, so we could probably go out there and find out where it's leaking.
Maybe, yeah. Thank you for your time, and as always, if you have any questions, call me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
See, that didn't take very long.
Yes.
I didn't fill the card, may I speak?
Yes.
Great. So, I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but after everything that's happened, I think you guys needed to hear something, so. Nick kind of like hit everything that I wanted to say. Mr. Graham?
Oh, okay.
I see the people at this table, you guys answered a calling, you understand that? The people in the county wanted you to do something, you guys stood up, uh, some of it to your detriment. You got Harpoon, a bunch of people talking, a bunch of stuff about you guys, Facebook mafia is not exactly the kindest people in the world, but as a citizen within this county, I just want to say thanks, I want to say thank you for the things that you're doing, it's not easy, it's hard, you're gonna make the hard choices, I see what it's doing to you guys, um, just realize that what you're doing, you're doing for the benefit of the people, not one group, not the other group, but we want you, the people who elected you, we want you to do what's best for us, okay? We don't have the answers, we have what we want, we have what we like, we'll come to you, we'll bet you, we'll wine, we'll do whatever, but in the end, you guys can make the hard decision, and I see that, I see you guys fighting, not amongst yourselves, wrestling with the idea, wrestling with the, the issues, and it's not hard, but hang in there, okay? You guys are doing great, it's not pretty, but it's not meant to be pretty, this is politics, I think you got good legal counsel, man's, I mean, I'm not trying to diss much anybody, but at least a man's speaking up, saying, hey, you know, just giving you advice right here in the open, uh, forum, okay? A lot of people are asking why you're having so many executive sessions, well, it doesn't take much to figure out why, you know, I don't call you guys, but I pretty much have my finger on the pulse of the county, there's other ways of getting information, so, keep it up, keep your head up, do the best that you can, and I for one, and there's a bunch of people that, that, you know, I talk to, we appreciate what you guys are doing, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Graham.
Thank you.
On the new business.
I don't know if those people on the Zoom hang, hung in there, I really don't.
No, during your executive session, they cannot wait any longer, so.
Okay.
We'll have to put it back on the agenda another time.
That was a K-Works Zoom meeting?
Yes.
I need a recess.
Five minutes to go? Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Thank you, Jennifer. You're doing a good job.
Thank you.
She might have done.
Maybe, maybe.
Do you want me to pass around the stuff that you've already approved to sign while you're?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
In vision, need me anything else?
No, you don't, come in about two months.
You're good, that's why I moved those executives to the top, so you can go.
You got gum on?
Go on, I'm good, thank you.
Yep.
Yep. What's this certified mail, Jennifer?
Oh, that was on the back of the resolution here, sorry, that's what popped up, I'll just pass. Everything, yeah.
My mom, thanks, thanks.
See you, be safe.
See you later.
See ya. Mom?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
You gave me salsa.
Nah, I don't, I only eat pork legs on case time.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, Turkey, they can give you a turkey, he's great. He gets a brand all the time. Turkey? Yeah, turkey.
He's just supposed to be in, in the freezer.
Tenderized, Mom.
I went somewhere and they had eggs, and they didn't have chicken egg, they had goose egg, they were like, that's a big. Brandon's toilet back, he's going back.
The tax roll, for real.
It's been five minutes. Have a good night. There you go, David, oh, you don't need to sign that one, that was just for the chairman.
Be careful.
Thank you. Mind if I keep these for a minute?
Nope, that's all right.
It's been five minutes?
Um, no, it was, so, 7:37, it'll be five minutes.
Anything different?
Do it.
Is this anything different?
Nope, that is just a small version of what's on the, the board.
All right, resume normal session. Southeast Kansas, Kansas Works Agreement?
I believe that this was emailed to all of you.
Oh, probably.
Okay, so it is, um, part of their Workforce and Innovation and Opportunity Act, so, I'll pass that along to Brandon to read, sign, whatever you may choose. Is that everybody or just Brandon?
Yeah, it's just got one signature line on it.
May I see the one for the special meeting? Do you want a motion to allow the chairman to sign the public?
Yes, we will need a motion if you want to approve it.
No.
You want to read it?
I read it.
You have read it?
The emails.
Can you explain the, can you explain the agreement, Jennifer, do you know anything about it?
I do not, I'll say, read it and see exactly what it's regarding, but I have not.
Were they gonna give the, was that, who was gonna give the, the Zoom?
No, this is different, that was K-Works, that was our workers' compensation, um, carrier.
Okay. Oh, is this to? Oh, is this to... This is for the workforce development?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. There you go, Brandon.
Do you understand what it is?
The Kansas Works, where they operate in the county.
I guess I'll make a motion after the commissioner signs this.
That the chairman?
The, the chairman, yeah, sorry. The chairman signs the, uh, Kansas Works Agreement.
A second. All right, Beer Power?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Wiesneth?
Yes. K-Camp Memorandum?
No, I think those are the ones that we're going to do the Zoom, and I think they...
No, that was K-Works. This is K-Camp. So K-Works is our workman's comp?
Yes, so K-Works was the workman's comp that was going to do the Zoom for the, um, safety presentation. I believe Susan sent out the K-Camp memorandum, um, which speaks, um, to the need for replacing roofs on D-County buildings.
Yes. And so K-Camp is our actual insurance company.
I guess they are insurance carrier.
And that, and they're not who was doing the Zoom?
No.
No.
No, they're different.
So K-Works is... Is like our workman's comp?
I had them written down for Zoom. I don't know why. I thought they were doing Zoom.
K, K-Camp, are you talking about the courthouse?
Probably all of our buildings.
Or all of them.
Yes, so they come in and do an inspection annually of, um, all of our facilities, and then that is their, um...
Assessment?
Assessment, yes, basically.
Yeah, so we only had two people on the agenda. That was the Kansas Works and the K-Camp. So which one was going to do the Zoom?
K-Works.
It was the very first one, yeah.
K-Works.
Brandon was K-Works.
I think you're confusing the Kansas Works with the K-Work thing.
Well, there's only two on the agenda, so the Kansas Works and the K-Camp. There was two on the agenda.
A was the K-Work for the Zooming.
Oh, you had three things on the agenda. I didn't see three. Okay, I only got two pamphlets also.
B is S-E-K Kansas.
Yeah, I only had two pamphlets.
That was the Kansas Works that I just signed.
So the other one didn't get a pamphlet, is that right?
Yeah, the other one was just going to give us a presentation, a safety presentation.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay. So what do we need to do with the K-Camp memorandum, anything?
Well, that is for your information. Um, it'll be a lot of information you'll need to keep in mind whenever you're doing budget as it is very costly to, um, to replace those, and I think they're saying what, at eighty percent, so it outlines what that, what that is.
Okay. All right. I guess that's it, so I guess commissioner comments?
I have nothing.
I can, I can start. And I, I apologize to start out with for getting a little heated. Um, I'm, I'm pretty, I'm pretty frugal. I need to make sure that we're using taxpayer money wisely. I'm pretty squeaky when it comes to that, and so I might have got a little bit offended because I might have thought that it wasn't being spent responsibly when, when we're talking about separating it, when... Anyhow, I'll start. Let me start with, um, "This has been a tough week. I've spent the last several weeks talking to departments from directors to elected officials. My goal overall was to acclimate, take the temperature of the county, learn a little bit about what my role would be in the budget process, and decide where my time would be best served. My opinion, there's a lack of respect for the taxpayer. Let it be known that I do not align myself with any of the elected offices. I'm here to represent the county in the best interest of the county as I see it through the knowledge available to me. If you as a citizen believe me to not be acting in the best interest of the county, by all means, let me know. If you find me hesitant to share or not overshare, it's because my aim is to contribute in a positive way and avoid being a financial liability to the county and its taxpayers. I get some of you have concerns. However, treating me rudely for things I have no part in is not the way to handle your concerns. Now, I won't hold my breath, but some of you could evaluate and think about conversations and decide if a different approach could serve us all better. As I navigate each, on each conversation has left me more defeated than before to point, to the point of where I'm downright worried for our taxpayers. Most recently, I was presented with a question that I was not to answer immediately. Instead, I was instructed to ponder on it and answer later. Well, I've done that, and I'm ready to answer. The question was to the tune of who should be making the most money? I thought, I thought, and I thought some more. I gave myself the weekend hoping my thoughts and unrest would settle. And although it seems the unrest had settled a little, my thoughts and perspective remain the same. My answer today, none of you. There are men and women that sign up to defend our nation every day, and they are signing up to serve. We all signed up to serve our county in a different capacity but want to sit here and bicker about what we deserve. Well, if you ask me, we all deserve to be elected out for our displeasing behavior that we subject our electorate to. And I don't want to hear any more about it. Right now, we have an economic crisis in our county. Let's not forget that we all signed on to serve the people of Bourbon County, not ourselves. And if anyone chooses to stay the course and keep on, now that you're aware, I'll do nothing because your choices are yours, and they're not a reflection of me and mine."
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second. All right, Milburn?
Yes.
Why, Beer Power?
Yes.
Wiesneth?
Yes.
For you guys, head out. I do have a few more things for you to sign.
Hey. So shoot, where did you get this? It was on your sack.
I don't know. It just showed up.
Do these come in the mail or something?
We have some, I got one of them at the county. We receive them for each department. Um, that's the conditions copy.